...own collection system. Restarting that after a two-year timeout is its own enormous challenge. That's been part of the reason I think we've seen these continued pauses is every time we get close, they realize they're not ready yet. There is a lot behind the scenes that has to start here before students start getting bills in the mail again and paying them. The way this works is that the Education Department is the lender for students. They directly own this 1.6 trillion in debt, but they hire outside companies to do the work of servicing the loans and actually collecting the payments on it. At the tail end of last year, two of the major contractors that the department uses for that work quit.
Because they have nothing to do?
Because they decided this was too tricky and they weren't getting paid enough for it.
Interesting.
So they pulled out, which means that the Education Department amidst everything else going on, has to transition millions of borrowers to new servicers, which is its own really tricky, complicated process. So one of the challenges of this is that that's going to take them about through the end of this year to complete. If you tried to restart the system before that was done, you'd be introducing this whole added element of confusion on the part of both the borrowers and the servicers.
So it sounds like even if the government wanted to ask people to start paying again, the infrastructure required to make that happen has kind of atrophied and in some cases collapsed.
Yes. There's been a lot of backend changes going on, a lot of things the department has been trying to fix along the way. There is also this looming psychological challenge because for two years, people have not been having to make these payments. Getting people used to the idea that yes, you have to do this again, is going to be a pretty giant task. And I think that is something that's really weighing heavily on both the government and certainly on the loan servicers, the companies that actually have to get people to send in these payments.
Well, let's talk about this. I mean, what you seem to be describing is the theory that after two-plus years of not paying student loans, there are tens of millions of Americans who might not ever want to repay them?
They're both used to this idea of not paying them, and because there's been so much talk about debt cancellation, there's a lot of people who are hoping, well, maybe I'll never have to pay this. So if they suddenly get a bill in the mail, people are going to face a real choice about is that a bill they pay or not?
The government worries that maybe people will get that bill and just say, no.
Yep. The fear is they will look at that bill and not pay it. In fact, this fear has become so widespread that there are people who believe, even within the Biden administration, that the only way you're going to get students to actually start making their payments again is by giving them some sort of incentive, some sort of carrot, like debt cancellation. This idea is that you need to do something big and dramatic to get people to opt back into the system, something like forgiving $10,000 in debt per borrower.
This is fascinating. So in trying hard to not pick a side in the great student loan debt debate, cancel debt or demand payments resume, President Biden may have actually effectively started to pick a side, and the side he picked, not perhaps deliberately, was that student debt in one form or another might need to be forgiven.
This is a case where every extension kind of narrows the range of choices. They have almost backed themselves into a corner in this by continuing to do this in this very piecemeal fashion. Biden has almost created this situation of what life looks like without student debt.
Right, so that kind of reinforces life without debt and perhaps reinforces the idea that I don't need to pay it.
Yeah. Every time another one of these extensions happens, my phone blows up with texts from my friends going, "Hooray, we never have to pay our student loans, do we?" So it's getting to be really hard for them to convince people that yes, you are going to one day have to do it.
Right. So it sounds like we're entering an almost indefinite period of grand-scale loan deferral, which in the minds of many, many American loan borrowers, has effectively become a de facto form of loan forgiveness. But just to be clear, it's not.
It's not. Which is why they need to make a decision about this eventually. So turning payments back on in September seems extremely unlikely. Virtually everyone involved in the system thinks this payment pause will be extended yet again into next year. And at that point, you've just continued the problem even further. You've told people yet again that we've given you another extension, that we're not going to make you pay your bills yet. And every time you do that, it gets harder and harder to convince people to come back in without doing something dramatic to make a change here.
Well, Stacy, thank you very much. Heard a lot here.
Thank you.
Stacy Cowley writes about business and finance for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Progressive. Progressive Commercial Insurance protects small businesses from retailers to tradespeople. Progressive covers a variety of business needs with a range of coverages. More at progressivecommercial.com. And by Avalara, simplifying sales tax compliance with cloud-based solutions. Avalara integrates with over 1,000 ERP and e-commerce solutions. Avalara, tax compliance done right. Get the story firsthand with The Daily, distributed by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Bobardo. See you tomorrow.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Baseline Solar Solutions, providing solar design, installation, and service since 2008 with grid-tied battery backup and off-grid options. Offices in Blacksburg and Richmond. BaselineSolar.com. And Quilts Unlimited, now part of Jay Fenton II on Charlottesville's Downtown Mall. Artisan jewelry, whimsical socks, and flax linen clothing, online at lenonwoman.com.
Radio IQ is broadcasting and digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ.
The Roanoke City Council regular session for April 18th, 2022, our 7 o'clock PM meeting is hereby called a order, and I'll ask our Clerk, Ms. Susie McCord, to please call the roll.
All right. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Here.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Price?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And I call Ms. President. We want to again welcome Ms. Price back to the council. We're delighted to have you back, and we look forward to working with you, and we'll make sure you get all the budget issues that we've got to deal with, and we'll catch you up on that, and we'll get you off good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let me say first, I'm delighted to be joined by members of the Board of Supervisors in Roanoke County. Wish you all would just stand and just be recognized. Stand up, guys. We want to just thank you for coming here. Thank you, thank you. And other members of Roanoke County, we're always pleased to have our neighboring governing body with us. That's a good thing, and so we're pleased to have that tonight and others that you'll be recognized shortly. All right, the invocation will be delivered by me tonight, and then I'll also be doing the prayers of allegiance, so I'll be doing double duty tonight. All right, would you stand, please? Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come to you tonight first and foremost to say thank you. Thank you for this day that you have given to us, and thank you, Lord, because we recognize that all of our blessings come from thee, and we ask you now to guide us as we, as elected and appointed officials, go about the business of this city. And Lord, we thank you for all the many wonderful blessings you've given us. And Lord, bless those who are hurt in our community, those that have situations, those who are going through troubled times. But we know that you are a God that can do all things, and we thank you for that. And Lord, we give you praise and honor for all that you've done. And Lord, we ask your blessings on those people and individuals in Ukraine that they're going through the horrible things that are taking place in that country. Be with them, Lord. And Father, we encourage you to, ask you to encourage us to do those things that can help them, and Lord, we just give you praise, honor, and glory. It is in the high and holy name of your Son that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. This is our second session of today, and we want to appreciate RV TV for being with us and throughout the course of the day. Council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RV TV, Channel 3, on Thursdays at 7 o'clock PM and Saturdays from 10 a.m. to 5 o'clock PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeba. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. So we do welcome everybody here tonight. All right, public hearings. As item number A is public hearings, and we will start with that. Item A1 is a request of the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors to amend a 2.25 acre portion of the institutional plan, unit development plan, in connection with property located at 3645 Orange Avenue Northeast, and to amend the comprehensive sign overlay district enacted as part of a previous rezoning dated August 21st, 2008. Benjamin Crew, Agent Blazer, and Associates Incorporated is the spokesman. And there is an ordinance.
Who's the ordinance?
Second.
All right, I'll ask the Clerk to please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance regarding a 2.25 acre portion of certain property located at 3645 Orange Avenue Northeast bearing official tax map number 7110105 by amending an institutional plan, a unit development plan, and repealing ordinance number 38064-042108 adopted April 21st, 2008 as it relates to this portion of property, to remove this portion of property from the comprehensive sign overlay district, adopted as part of previous rezoning and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. The City Planning Commission recommends approval of this plan, and at this time, I want to recognize Mr. Crew for any comments that he may have or any questions that council may need answered. How you doing?
Doing fine. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Lee, Mayor, members of council. I'm just going to take a few moments this evening with this particular request, as it's a little bit unique. I'd like to introduce a few folks that are with me this evening. I'm with Ballzer and Associates, representing the agent that's on behalf of the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors, who's your applicant this evening. A few of those folks, Mayor Lee, you mentioned two Board of Supervisor members are with us this evening, Mr. Paul Mahoney, who's the current chair and represents the Cave Spring District. And then secondly, Mr. Phil North, who's with us, another Board of Supervisor member who represents the Hollins District. There's also some Roanoke County leaders and staff that I'd like to recognize this evening as well, and so if you'll spare me just a couple moments to go through those folks. Mr. Richard Kaywood, who's Roanoke County's Administrator, Mr. Doug Blunt, Roanoke County's Assistant Administrator, Chief Travis Griffith with Fire and Rescue, Ms. Rachel Lauer, who's a Senior Assistant County Attorney, sitting behind me, and then Mr. George Acet, who's Capital Projects Administrator. So we've got lots of friends with us here this evening. And then from the ownership side, we have Ms. Mary Ellen Goodlatte, who's sitting right here, who's counsel for Parkway Wesley &amp; Church. So we have lots of friends around us this evening. And then a couple of quick comments. We just want to send, say, a moment of appreciation from Roanoke County to Roanoke City for the work that's been put into this request and this application. There's been a lot of effort to get to this point for the petition that's before you this evening, and we thank you for your favorable recommendation or approval this evening. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have. And with that, I'll defer back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Crew. I'm going to open the public hearing. And are there any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter?
Yes, sir. One citizen, that is Chris Craft.
Good evening, Ms. Craft.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of City Council. My name is Chris Craft, and I am the president of the Wildwood Civic League. Wildwood is the oldest civic league in the city of Roanoke and largest and oldest in the U.S. I come as president, which I don't hold that position lightly. I do what I do for the citizens of my neighborhood. But when a project comes before the Planning Commission and does not get, the city staff does not notify the neighborhood, how many times have I been to the City Council because of this? The City Planning Commission does not care what the city neighborhoods want. If they did, they would have brought this to me instead of our citizens calling me at 12:30 in the morning, "Oh, I saw this in the newspaper. We don't want this." And the top reason they didn't want it is because the city did not come to us and tell us about it before it went to the news. We should have gotten informed and been able to sit down and discuss it, since it's going to be in our neighborhood. Upon speaking to a Planning Commission person, the county is not willing to put sidewalks in front of this fire station for people who might want to walk up and down from Parkway. The city did not enforce, is not going to require that. They've asked it, but they're not going to force them. We don't, we, we're not, I'm not fully against it, and I'm not fully for it. Because like I said, as the president of the Neighborhood Association, we should have been notified in advance about this project. Richfield came. They sat, they come before, they went to planning, they came to sit down with me, the neighborhood, discussed it, and we got our say-so. We got to find out. The city does not do that, and I'd like to know why. I have Ms. Sanchez Jones, which is one of my neighbors, in my Neighborhood Association, and I knew if that was her backyard, that she wouldn't just want something being built without somebody coming saying something to her first. I have multiple neighbors that have received notices about this project, but nothing on there saying city staff or the county will be at such and such to meet with you for any concerns. I don't blame the county for that. I blame the city. Our city, our neighborhood is quickly growing. We have a new Sheetz Chipotle. We have a tropical smoothie cafe, and we have a great big reconstruction project at King and Gustafson, Orange Avenue, coming soon. My job is to make my neighborhood safe, buy in both to the city, and bring in income. But please, we need to be treated fairly. We need to be let know when something wants to come to our neighborhood so we can sit down and discuss it with the applicant, so we can have our say-so in our neighborhood.
All right, thank you, Ms. Craft. We will follow up and with the Planning Commission to clear up why you all weren't contacted in regards to this matter. All right, Madam Clerk, is there any other citizens?
No, no, sir.
Okay. With that being the case, we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask my colleagues on City Council if they have any comments. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Craft, and I do have a question about the communications or the lack of with the residents of that neighborhood, because I've gotten several calls myself saying that the neighbors and the residents were not engaged. Can someone just tell me if they had any meetings where they took place and how they reached out to the community?
Can you answer that question, Ms. Crew? Or we need somebody from the Planning Commission?
It may be a combination of the applicant and staff about how that, it's kind of a combination effort that occurs there. So City of Roanoke staff sends out communication. It's not necessarily just adjacent property owners. Sometimes it goes farther, depending on where the project is. During the Planning Commission, it was discussed that either planning staff or Catherine Gray received phone calls from concerned citizens that had questions. Over the phone, they were resolved, or they had a minor question that was answered, and so there was no official public comment that was left, and we haven't received any communication to date that's facilitated a neighborhood meeting or any of those type of events, because we haven't had any or much public input. We haven't had any comments forwarded to us from staff with information we have responded to. So the application has changed over time because of staff comments or Planning Commission work session or just through the normal process, but we haven't received any communication from neighbors or, you know.
Okay, so you have not received any communication. Did you reach out to the Neighborhood Association to see if you could meet with them possibly?
We did not reach out to the Neighborhood Association. No, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else that's working on the project, did anyone else reach out to the Neighborhood Association or?
I don't know that we had any direct communication from a Roanoke County staff standpoint. No, ma'am.
Okay. Just, I'm just curious, because like Mr. Craft said, normally for a project of this magnitude, they would engage the residents in that neighborhood.
Sure.
I'm sorry to hear that there was no communication with that.
Yeah, and typically, that's the regular course of action.
Sure.
On most land use, that information is sent out, so I don't know, I don't know where the disconnect was, but, you know, we've done our part to get to this point, and so.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'll follow up on what Trish is saying. In the past, there has been practice from the Planning Commission as well as the Clerk's Office. For the Planning Commission, the neighborhood presidents are notified along with adjoining property owners and interested parties. I don't know where the breakdown, I'm with Trish, I don't know where the breakdown may be now, but in past practices, that was done, where you would seek out if there was a president of a Neighborhood Association, they would be contacted as well as the adjoining property owners, and again, any other interested parties. So I don't know if the Planning Commission continues to do that or not, but I would think perhaps the Clerk still does, when it's for the council side to notify them.
Ms. Moon?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that I did send out some information that we usually do through the adjoining property owners and interested partners. We have a whole list of names where we did send the information, so we may want to review some of that.
Right. That's what I was saying. I knew that, but I don't know what the Planning Commission does when they send out. That's something they would have to answer for the Planning Commission side, for the interested party owners, adjoining property owners and interested persons to be notified of a Planning Commission meeting, because we're notified about the council.
Are you? Okay, come on down. I'm gonna call on the Ms., well, hold on, let me get with Ms.
No, no, go ahead, Craig, because I'm gonna talk about something else.
Okay.
Jillian.
Come on down.
Good evening. Gillian Papamore with the Planning Department. Happy to address questions about our standard protocol as it relates to land use applications coming before Planning Commission. Ms. Moon Reynolds is correct, that was a past practice in terms of specific stakeholders in neighborhoods being identified in the past through the Office of Neighborhood Services, and a past practice. But our standard practice here going forward and for some years now has involved our civic send notifications and citizens can sign up for specific communications relating to either Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Certain Architectural Review Board, and sign up for certain notifications. This particular application was basically discussed at at least three public meetings, Planning Commission work session, and there were opportunities through those civic send notifications to, for public comment to be made and heard by the Planning Commission. So another standard practice for the Planning Department as staff is to encourage the applicant to notify or engage, or specifically to engage the neighborhood affected by the application. So we do encourage that engagement from the applicant's standpoint. So that is just speaking to some of our standard practices, both as staff and through notification for Planning Commission purposes. I hope that helps.
And what has changed? Because it should not, the standard practice still should include public engagement at a public hearing. It should not be precluded that they need to go to a website. Again, I state this every time, that not all, everyone has access to a website, and that, just like Mr. Craft is saying here, that is in his community, and like you said, it used to come out of Neighborhood Services. I still think we, as a city, still should do that part of notifying the, along with adjoining property owners, to ensure the neighborhood presidents, especially when we are trying to encourage neighborhood associations to be part of the practice here, to be inclusive with, to be included with the city, and we're not doing that when we exclude them.
I don't want to misrepresent what's occurring and really the difference between what the previous practice was versus now. The previous practice was a, just an email notification that involved different leaders from different neighborhood groups. At this point, we simply use the civic send system to provide that same form of notification. So it was previously digital in form. So it was previously digital in form. We just use the tools that we have now to push that out to those who are subscribed.
But it was a public notice of the change in the practices is where I'm going.
I can't speak to that.
You just did them, I know.
I can't speak to that.
I'm just saying, the department did them, but no notification went out to say, "This is gonna be the practice."
It's the same approach. It's just a different methodology.
But it's still, it does not include, it's not inclusive.
Just for clarification, Gillian, did, so did the Wildwood Neighborhood Association or the Civic League receive notice through any of those mechanisms? Speaking to Gillian, please.
I can't speak to that specifically. I'm just speaking to the standard practice.
Okay. Because I, I think what we're, I think, what I hear we're saying is that previously, the associations would have been notified via email, by no other means. We still notify folks by email. I don't know whether that included Wildwood in this case. That's why I was asking that question.
Okay. And I do want to address and confirm what Mr. Crew has said about the comments from the public. We, the staff did receive several inquiries by phone, and they were all able to be discussed and resolved. And it, and there was no result, resulting opposition to the application. So it was just, just informational in nature in terms of the phone calls.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, by my...
Yes, sir.
...do a clarification by asking questions. Gillian, did all the notices required by law go out?
Yes.
Was it advertised? Was a public hearing, the planning commission advertised?
Yes.
Was public hearing for this, tonight's public hearing advertised?
Yes.
And what does planning commission or planning department do in excess of the legal requirements?
We post the property through signage, which is in excess of what is required by state code. We also post the application on our website and provide that push notification out to citizens through civic send, to all of those subscribers.
It can always be better, I understand. Anticipating, but I want you to know, I want council to know that we've met the legal requirements.
Right, we met the legal, and that's the minimum. But we feel that, in the past, it was always a little more, not just the minimum, but to make sure that we get out to the public any notices that would engage the citizen to have participation.
I, I do want to reiterate that we ask each and every applicant to engage with the community that, that is affected by their land use decision.
Okay. Well, we'll work on that process. Thank you.
We'll just need to work on the process.
Mr. Best pitch.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really wanted to talk about something else, and I will. But I just want to encourage everyone who is interested in this sort of thing to understand what we mean by the civic push-out. Not everyone uses email. Not everyone may have access to the internet. Almost everyone, almost everyone these days, has a phone that takes text messages. So you can sign up for the text messages that you only want to hear about the planning commission. Or you can sign up for all of them, which I do, and I get tons of them every day. But if you, if you're interested in the planning commission, please sign up for that. And it, you know, it takes 30 seconds to look at it and say, "Well, that's not in my neighborhood. I don't need to be concerned about that." Or, "Wow, this sounds like it's really close by. Maybe I should find out what this is all about." But that, that information does go out via text messages. And as I say, almost everybody has the ability to, to receive those. But what I really wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, is that we have been very fortunate to have such a great partnership between the City of Roanoke Fire EMS and Roanoke County Fire and Rescue Services. We have counted on them many times to help with situations in the city, and they have been able to get our help when they needed it for a situation, whether it's a major conflagration or whatever the situation may be. So I just wanted to recognize that and to thank our colleagues from the Board of Supervisors and the administration in Roanoke County for making sure that we all work together. And I might just add Salem as well. So we, we have these mutual support agreements, and we all help each other when it's necessary. And I have seen that happen for more than 20 years now, and I really, really appreciate it. I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Best pitch. Are there any more speakers?
No.
Mr. Cobb.
I just kind of want to build on that and, and... I, I won't add anymore to what we've said about communication. We just clearly need to do a better job of that. That was a, an oversight that shouldn't have happened. So, to whatever extent, you know, internally, externally, that we can communicate that and make sure that... Because, you know, people from outside how our system works don't know how our system works. So it's up to us as council members, as staff, to make sure they know. And so, when, when they're urged to contact neighbors, what does that mean? It, it could just mean the adjoining businesses, but it could be broader than that. And so, I just want to make sure from an equitable standpoint that we communicate that very clearly through all of our processes, so that we're... We may feel like we're over-communicating it, but I'd rather over-communicate what we're doing and reach as many people as we can than, than, than have scenarios like this. So, that being said, I'm, I'd have a couple of questions just about the project in general for people who, for whom this may be new. It's a fire station that Roanoke County is wanting to, to place on this property. Can you all talk a little bit about the collaboration? I know we have collaboration between our Fire and EMS in multiple counties, but could we talk about how this location will work in collaboration with Roanoke City's Fire and EMS and what, what that kind of scenario looks like? I recently attended the graduation ceremony for four of the counties, and it was fantastic. A great class. And, and I know there's, as Councilman Best pitch said, there's great cooperation. But if you could just elaborate on that, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, sure. If you have to. Chief Travis Griffin, if you can answer those questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cobb, members of council. First of all, thank y'all for having us this evening. I think this is just another great example of regional cooperation and how we can do things better together. And going back to what Mr. Best pitch talked about, we are constantly evaluating our mutual aid and automatic aid agreements. We're actually doing that right now. That process is taking effect almost daily with Roanoke City's Fire and EMS Department and us. As a department adds staffing, as a department adds services, as, as services go away in an area, we want to make sure we're balancing that within this region. So as Mr. Best pitch said, with City of Salem, City of Roanoke, and Roanoke County, we constantly evaluate those mutual aid and automate, automatic aid agreements. Who's gonna run the calls where and for whom? We're very fortunate with our relationship that's been built over years of, of collaboration that we can do that in this area. Unfortunately, it's sad to say there's a lot of areas in this country that don't have that regional collaboration amongst the public safety agencies. They won't allow each other in their border, so to speak. A great example I've used with the planning commission, Herschberger Road where Friendship Manor is. A lot of people don't realize, one side of Herschberger Road, Friendship Manor is Roanoke County, the other side is Roanoke City. Well, you may go up there right now, and there's a yellow fire truck, or a county yellow medic truck in Roanoke City, and there's a red city ambulance on the Roanoke County side. It, it depends on who's available in that area at the time to get to that, to get to that citizen in need. So as, as we move forward with this, and with present-day economy and present-day status of everything, we're probably two years away from staffing the station. As we get closer to that, it'll be another evaluation process with us in Roanoke City to collaborate on those mutual aid and automatic aid agreements for that, for that whole district.
Thank you. I, I know that, just back to something Mr. Kraft mentioned earlier, one of the issues that came up, has come up is Richfield. You know, with increased senior housing, having close proximity of Fire and EMS, and that availability is, is really critical.
Yes, sir.
So I think that's a benefit of this.
Yes, sir. That whole corridor, that 460 corridor through Roanoke City and Roanoke County, that is a growing area. We're gonna continue to see commercial and residential growth. So the need for public safety is just gonna continue to grow in that area, no matter who's providing it. The need's gonna be there, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Is that... Ms. Sanchez?
Yes. Thank you for being here tonight. So, I'm under the understanding that you and Chief Hoback have talked about this issues?
Yes, correct. Yeah, when we first kind of came up with this idea, Chief Hoback and I talked. He 100% fully supports it. I believe at one of the preliminary work sessions for the planning, they had the city fire marshal's office there as well as representatives of the fire department. They 100% from the very front. So we absolutely 100% support doing this.
I wish he was here tonight.
Yeah. No, it, it's just another collaborative effort in what we do reasonably with everybody involved. The, and I keep talking about the mutual aid and automatic aid agreements that we have, but it, it's not just Roanoke City, Salem, and Roanoke County. It's expanded to Bodata County, Franklin County, Montgomery County. All of us in this whole area, we build, I was telling the planning commission, we build run cards. You know, it's kind of a systematic run order for every address or every response area. And we're in a whole lot of Roanoke City's run cards there, and, you know, we're in a lot of theirs. They're in a lot of ours. We're in Salem, cities in Salem. We build that in where it's not, we have to call and say, "Hey, could y'all please send somebody?" A lot of times, they're automatically dispatched at the same time. So it may be a call in Roanoke City where Roanoke County units are being dispatched at the exact same time, and vice versa. City units are being dispatched in Roanoke County. So this will just be looked at as another one of those areas we'll collaborate on to designate those run cards and establish that, that order.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. That concludes the public hearing. I'm gonna close the public hearing now and ask the city council if they have any further comments. We've commented on several things, but have any further comments? Let me just say that as Councilman Best pitch alluded to, we've been working together for years, and it's important that when the county and the city get together to do some things together. And that's, we want to encourage that. We want to do that, and, and I think I agree of a good working relationship and, and, and you're so right. It's, you can go down Herschberger and, and over Friendship Manor, and you can see them yellow versus red. They're going all the way. And for me, that's a good thing. I'm thinking we save there and those kinds of things. And we want to continue to do that. Thank you guys for that, and, and we probably could be down the line. I'm sure Chief Hoback could be knocking on the door over there in terms of us helping them. So, cooperation and collaboration is important, and I think we have that. And I want to thank you all for that as we go forward. And there may be some instances when every T is not crossed and every I not dotted, but we know how we can still make that work. And I don't think it's anybody's intention to leave anybody out, but sometimes caught up in the things that we're doing and happens, it happens. So, I'm appreciative of this opportunity for us to show the support for what you all are trying to do. So with that being said, I'm gonna ask the clerk to please call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White, Vice Mayor White Boyd, I'm sorry?
Aye.
Mr. Best pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And so, thank you all for that. Thank you, Chief. All right. All right, item number two is, on the public hearings, is a request of Summer D. Pate to repeal all proffered conditions as part of a previous rezoning on property located at 2311 Sanford Avenue Southwest, dated May 17, 1993. Summer D. Pate, petitioner is his spokesperson. Is Mr. Pate here? I'm sorry, Ms. Pate. All right, the spokesperson. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title very well.
An ordinance to repeal ordinance number 31442-051793, adopted May 17, 1993, to the extent that is placed certain conditions on property located at 2311 Sanford Avenue Southwest, bearing official tax map number 1271014, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. The planning commission again recommends approval on this item. And I'll recognize Ms. Pate for any comments that she would like to have.
Good evening, council. We are requesting that you repeal the conditions that are on the building at 2311 Sanford Avenue. We would like to put a business in there. And currently, the way the conditions are, it doesn't allow for anything but the existing business that is actually out of business. And the building has changed hands, I believe twice since that time. And that business is no longer in existence. And the way the conditions stand, it doesn't allow for very much other. And we feel like it, it is, retail business falls in the corridor that it's zoned for, and we would like to be able to do that.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. And we have Mr. Bill Walker here to speak tonight on this item. Mr. Walker, come on down, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Lee, council. Bill Walker, Walker Commercial Services, commercial estate firm of about 35 years, 33 years here in the city. I encourage you on their, the pharmacist that's here with us tonight, his business plan. I was not really involved in the beginning until I read his plan backwards and forwards. I met with them on several occasions at their house I met with them on several occasions at their house and decided to take this, one of these projects on. The, the plan is unbelievable as far as providing generic drugs at a very low cost to the general public is something certainly we all need as we get older this day and time, young alike with our situation in our country. We looked, it wanted to be in the city. We looked at many locations, many facilities, inline spaces, et cetera, et cetera, and narrowed it down to this one business house converted into a business in its location. Feel like that's the best spot for a pharmacy of this type, the ingress egress, the existing signs there, so I would encourage you to read the plan. You'll be convinced, like I am, how well constructed this gentleman of 17 years has had a pharmacy in Farron, Virginia. And we would certainly anticipate and hope you would vote yes on the, on the locations and removing the proffers as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard on this issue? All right, if not, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll ask my colleagues on council if they have any questions or comments. All right, sign off. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the plan and passes, thank you, thank you, thank you all. Item number three is the proposal of the city of Roanoke to consider the relocation of two polling places, being voter precincts number one, Peter's Creek, and number 18 Summit Hills. And the realignment of voter precincts number 17 Lehigh and number 18 Summit Hills. Timothy R. Spencer, the city attorney, is the spokesperson here. And there is an ordinance.
Move the ordinance, second.
All right, madam clerk, please read this header paragraph.
An ordinance approving and adopting the final redistricting maps, approved by the Supreme Court of Virginia, amending and re- re-deraining sections 10-18, same polling place, 10-49, voter precinct number 17, Lehigh Precinct Boundaries, 10-51, voter precinct number 18 Summit Hills Precinct Boundaries, and 1052, same polling place, Article II, Election District Voter Precincts and Polling Places, Chapter 10 Elections of the Code of the City of Roanoke as amended, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right, thank you. I'll recognize Mr. Spencer for any comments or thoughts he have on this issue.
Real briefly, Mr. Mayor, this is the situation when the Supreme Court approved final redistricting maps. We went from about seven split districts, I believe is what we previously had, to now having two split districts. This will eliminate the split districts. Also, by moving the district lines in the Summit Hills area, what we do is we still create an appropriate district size as far as the number of voters to comply with the law. We're well within that measure. And then we had two voting locations that had previously served the city, who declined to serve in the future, so we will be changing those two locations. One of them, moving it over to William Fleming High School, and the other to the church, Presbyterian Church Westminster, I believe it is. And that is, with your approval, set forth in the ordinance that amends our code.
All right, any, so we'll open the public hearing. Anybody that signed up to speak on this?
No, sir. No.
Nobody signed up, okay. Well, okay, I'm gonna give that, we'll get a chance to come down on it. I want to close the public hearing. And I will now ask the, well, councilman, we're gonna go right down now to the comments by the council, so, council, Price.
Thank you. You, you kind of alluded to it already, Mr. Spencer, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear and understanding that with the realignment, well, the reassignment of these precincts, the number of participants as far as voters does not change in any way?
It does change. It moves approximately 500 voters from one district to another, but those ranges stay within the ranges allowed by law, and they're common within the city of Roanoke. In other words, by doing this move of approximately 500 voters to get the lines so that we don't have a split district, they'll, we're not creating the largest voting district nor the smallest. They'll still, still be approximately in the middle. We did work with our registrar in, in, in moving these lines and also with polling places. He worked with Westminster Presbyterian Church on Peters Creek, and then has worked with the school division on those voting locations. So we're basically doing two different things. We're moving a voting line for the precincts so that you can see where we're, the Lehigh District and the Summit Hills Boundaries get amended between the two. And then we're establishing those two new voting, low polling places.
So with this tweaking, and as you said, this has been vetted by our registrar, Mr. Cochran, he, he's not here tonight?
He is not here today.
Okay.
His husband's just undergone a medical procedure, so he's, he's not here tonight.
Okay. I, I know previously there had been some concerns about the, the sizes of participants in our voter precincts, so I just wanted to make sure that those particular concerns have been taken into consideration.
They were, and if I might, Mr. Best Pitch, illicit that I think you were also part of this process, since he's been such a leader in this area when we went to 20 voting districts. So that we did reach out and make sure that he felt comfortable with the number. So we have done that to try to achieve that balance, as well as prevent, this will save so much effort from the registrar's standpoint if we have no split districts. In other words, he doesn't have to worry about having ballots that say which member of the General Assembly you're voting for in the middle of the same district. Right now, this will prevent that.
Like, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that, to deal with this, which of course I would expect, but I wanted to, you know, for my own self-interest, just to make sure.
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spencer, so does that mean that the one at Fleming, the precinct at Fleming, and the one at Ruffner, are they still gonna be, the one at Ruffner, so they're gonna be back right next door to each other? Because I thought?
Ruffner is not going to be there, and we're moving over Fleming. Remember what they're doing to Ruffner, to move Rotek over?
Oh, okay, okay.
They're completely redoing that.
So they're completely getting rid of that one and moving it, all, both of them together in, at Fleming?
Well, they're moving the one from Ruffner over to Fleming.
Over to Fleming, okay, okay.
So it's moving next door so that they can renovate Ruffner, so that we can have Rotek there on both sides of town.
And then the other one at the church, that used to be at the church, will now be at another church Westminster?
It used to be at Edgewood Christian, and they let us know ahead of time that they no longer wanted to serve as a polling place. However, Westminster Presbyterian Church was willing to do this, and that's where, why it's moving there.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my position.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because I, I know that it's a big precinct already, but I, I hope it doesn't get any larger.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Well, no, actually, that's a precinct that will get a little bit smaller because that this is taking part of that precinct out, moving the line for that. Just to make sure that, that we're clear, we had, I can't remember right now, Mr. Spencer, seven or eight different precincts where people would come in to vote, and some of the people who voted at that polling place, because they lived in that precinct, voted for one House of Delegates district, and some of the people voted for a different House of Delegates district. That was the only split, because we all run at large through the city. All of our constitutional officers run at large. The Virginia State Senate, you know, encompasses the entire city, District 21 and the sixth district, congressional district. So that was the only place where that became a confusion. And we really tried to minimize that when we worked on redrawing the precinct lines after the 2012 election, which I'm sure the mayor and Ms. Price recall, how many people we had very concerned about the lengthy time they'd had to wait in line. And what bothered me more than anything else is the people that said, I couldn't wait. I had to go home, I had to take care of my kids, I had to go to work, I had to, you know, whatever. I didn't get to vote at all. And that's when we went to work on this and changed it. And I, I will tell you that I, with the, with the commission, that was supposed to come up with this redistricting plan, before it got kicked over to the Supreme Court, I contacted them in writing and participated in a virtual meeting where I spoke and said, whatever you do, please keep all of our precincts together. Draw the district lines consistent with the precinct lines. And they did that every place except one. So that's how we ended up with this situation, with some people on one side of Shenandoah Avenue, and some people on the other side of Shenandoah Avenue. And it, it just, it just didn't make sense to us, I think, to keep that precinct where you still have the same issue. One, some people voting in one House of Delegates district, some people in another. So this, this eliminates that problem for everybody, and I, I think it's, it's a good move. I want to confirm with Mr. Spencer, since Mr. Cochran is not available this evening, that everyone who lives in voter precinct number one, which is the Peters Creek precinct, will receive a notice in the mail that their polling place has been changed, correct?
Yes, as well as the normal advertisements, and that will start tomorrow. Plus, it'll be on the websites. If council approves this, of course. If they don't, if you don't approve it, then we're not gonna mail those letters.
But, but they'll all get a, a notice?
Yes, they will.
In the mail, that their polling place?
As required by law.
And the same thing with the, the people who change in 17 and, of course, in 18, and
The polling place.
The polling place for number 18 Summit Hills precinct. They will all get notified?
Yes.
In the mail.
Absolutely.
They'll get a new voter identification, registration card, whatever you call it, and, and that information will be on there. So
Correct.
We're gonna make sure that nobody gets left out for this, this communication, right?
And really in time for the primary, did it happen in time for the June primary?
Yes, that's one of the reasons why. We've, we've outlined the entire timeline under the new process. We, before, this came before you, before tonight's public hearing, we had the requisite comment period, and then we'll have the requisite period after, after this, notifying individuals so that the primary is good to go.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you all. Then, madam clerk, we're down to call the row.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the ordinance passes, and we should be getting things in the mail tomorrow. All right. Item number four is a, is to receive views of citizens regarding appointment of two Roanoke City School Board trustees for three-year terms of office, each commencing on July 1, 2022. The candidates are Mary F. Appel. How is that name pronounced?
I think they pronounce it A-Pell, I would say A-Pell.
A-Pell.
But they pronounce it A-Pell.
A-Pell. All right, Mary F. Appel, Ryan A. Bell, Kathy S. Cohen, and George W. Watkins. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing, and citizens wishing to be heard have, I'm sure, made contact with the clerk. And so I'll ask the clerk to give me the list of people who signed up to speak tonight.
All right, I have two speakers, Catherine House and Marcy Brumberg.
All right, Ms. House?
She's not here, okay.
All right. Ms. Brumberg?
Brumberg, yes.
Brumberg.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am Marcy Brumberg, and it is my honor and pleasure to recommend Rabbi Kathy Cohen as a member of the Roanoke City School Board. I have lived in Roanoke for 40 years. My children all attended Roanoke City Schools. My grandson is now in kindergarten at Garden City Elementary School. I was delighted at the education my children received, and I am more impressed with the services provided to my grandson. He is a child with special needs, and at Garden City, he is thriving thanks to the care and expertise of the staff. Each one of his amazing teachers should be Teachers of the Year. This is just a little plug, but I digress. What does any of this have to do with Rabbi Cohen being appointed to the school board? Her title will integrate, indicate why I think she would be a valuable asset. The title Rabbi, which indicates a Jewish spiritual leader, literally translates from the Hebrew as my teacher. In Judaism, the highest quality that can be bestowed on our spiritual leader is one who educates us in all aspects of our faith. It is not their scholarship or academic prowess, it is one who will teach us. In this regard, the title of Rabbi is most appropriate when it comes to Rabbi Cohen, because she has spent the last 25 years as Rabbi at Temple Emmanuel, guiding the congregants and teaching them. For Rabbi Cohen, education is not only a fundamental right, but a necessary asset that each individual is entitled to. She educates by example, by knowledge, and by experience. She has made education the cornerstone of her tenure at Temple Emmanuel. However, she has not limited that endeavor to the confines of the Jewish community at Temple or the Jewish community at large. She has served on many boards and causes in the Roanoke Valley. In addition, she has created outreach projects at local Roanoke City schools. Just recently, she enlisted a group of temple members to serve as reading buddies at Lincoln Terrace Elementary School. To say that she is an advocate for providing the best possible education experience for every child is an understatement. Her high ideals propel her to look for ways to make every child's educational experience a successful one. One time, just recently, she was tutoring a young man. She realized he was very gifted. He expressed that his ambition was to attend the governor's school, but was certain it would never happen. Well, it did, thanks to the insistence and determination of Rabbi Cohen. She would bring this deal and resolve to the complicated issues that are presented to the school board. Her insights and input would be a valuable asset to this board in helping Roanoke City Schools improve and grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Since this is such an important decision for us, may we just ask if there are any other citizens who want to speak in support of any of the four people that we interviewed?
Yes, we can.
Just to be sure if there's any?
Yeah. Does anybody here have signed up, anybody that wants to speak? Ah, we got you, I'm gonna recognize you. Anybody else here that want to speak on behalf of any of the school board candidates? That did not sign up?
We know what you're gonna say.
We know what you're gonna say.
All right, we'll recognize you. Can you?
Yes.
Get him?
Oh, we can, we can get him signed up, yes, that'd be fine. But we have before us Jennifer Jones Powell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Jennifer Jones Powell, and in my profession, I am a literacy education professor. I'm quite familiar with our fine school system, and in particular, its commitment to literacy. And so as a resident of our fine city and a lifelong educator, I am here in support of Kathy Cohen's application to serve on the Roanoke City School Board. Kathy Cohen has rich experiences in early childhood education, working with children and with parents to promote child welfare and learning. She has spent, as it was said before, a good portion of her lifetime nurturing and fostering learning opportunities for people in all ages and stages of life, from children to adolescents and adults. And in just this past year, Rabbi Cohen initiated a literacy program at one of our city elementary schools, some of you may be involved in it. And she has rallied volunteers from all over the community, a core set of adults, to read with children each and every week. Kathy Cohen is a lifelong learner herself. She has a natural curiosity for issues that matter. She studies, she reads, and she listens. I think one of her best traits is that she is such a good listener. She listens carefully and respectfully to various perspectives. She engages in meaningful dialogue, she asks really good questions, and she talks with people to teach and to learn. And because she's such a good listener who weighs in all perspectives, she's an excellent problem solver. Kathy Cohen is committed to our children and our city, and I am confident that she will study all of the issues she faces diligently. She will listen to all perspectives and consider them well. And I am confident that she will promote an inclusive and equitable culture in our school system. She will always, without a doubt, Our children and our city need Kathy Cohen, and for all of these reasons and more, I support her application to serve on the Roanoke City School Board as a trustee. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers here regarding school board applicants? Welcome, Mr. Bell.
I think everyone on city council in the audience in the city of Roanoke knows who I'm down here to support, so I'm here to support Mr. Ryan Bell for school board. I am an employee at Garden City Elementary School, and it is a wonderful staff, and I agree with the previous speaker that everyone over there should receive a Teacher of the Year award. But I am here to speak on behalf of my brother, Ryan Bell for school board. One of the benefits of having an older brother is you can look up to him and, you know, see what you can become. And since Ryan has moved back to Roanoke from Richmond, Virginia, he has hit the ground running with working with the local school system. He's at the West End Center, the Boys and Girls Club. He comes over to Garden City Elementary School every Thursday. I mean, he also wears his ties with myself and the young boys over there. We sit down, we have lunch. So he's already involved in the school system, just throughout the work that he does throughout the city and his volunteer work. The Fatherhood Program that he started, Black Father Initiative with the United Way, is an organization that attempts and does a very good job at getting fathers involved in their child's education and their child's life. So to me, a school board member, one, before they get on school board, has to show a sense of the knowing, the understanding, and the importance of volunteering their time with the local school system. The local school system is a wonderful school system to work for. They're doing a very great job at trying to create ways to change the atmosphere of Roanoke City and Roanoke City Schools. And I think the benefit of having Mr. Bell on the school board is he brings a sense of already knowing the community, already knowing the majority of the children that attend our schools and working at the after-school programs that our children attend, volunteering his time at the schools. He's a father of four, so he understands the importance of education. He understands the importance of raising a child in a city school. So, yes, I am here in support of Mr. Ryan Bell. All of the candidates are worthy. We will not lose anything on the school board with whomever you choose, but of course, I would like for you to choose Mr. Ryan Bell. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes all of the citizens here to speak on behalf of school board candidates. So the public hearing is closed. I'll ask the council if they have any comments or anything they'd like to say regarding this process.
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
This particular job gets harder and harder, because we have, as Mr. Bell just pointed out, we have four very worthy applicants, and they all presented themselves very well. They all had done their homework, and I'm not looking forward to having to say to somebody, you know, sorry, we can't take all four.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a tough part of this decision making. Thank you, Mr. Best Pitch. Any other comments from members of council? All right. I want to thank all of you all that came out, and the appointment of the three school board members will be at a subsequent council meeting in May. We'll make that the first of May. So thank you all for taking time to come out tonight. All right, we're now down to item B, which is hearing of citizens upon public matters. And, Madam Clerk, do you have the names of the people that signed up to speak?
Yes, I do.
If you don't, I have some. Go ahead, I'll let you call them. I like the way you do it.
Well, Mayor, I think I gave you some of the list, but I'll call what I have. If I have an additional, if you have additional than what I have.
I can do it. I can do it.
Well, let me start with the ones I did from email, and you don't have those, so I'll do those folks.
Okay, all right.
Okay, the first speaker that I have is Julie Wagner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Members of Roanoke City Council, recently, I was at an event where a member of city council remarked how safe the streets of Roanoke are to pedestrians. As an avid runner who runs various parts of the city, I have to say I wholeheartedly disagree with this statement, and it is time council takes an honest look at pedestrian safety in Roanoke and make much-needed changes. The city has done a fabulous job of marketing Roanoke and the outdoor activities we have here. This past weekend was a prime example. We had the Blue Ridge Marathon, which was followed by a concert. In June, we will be hosting Ironman, and the women's Olympic cycling team will soon start training in Roanoke. If Roanoke will continue to host running and cycling events, we need to take an honest look at our pedestrian safety. On a typical run, I will have an experience with at least one motorist who is not paying attention and comes within the three-feet minimum safe distance, or a motorist running stop signs and/or not looking both ways before proceeding, or a motorist who tells me to get out of the road, or all of the above, or I get sexually harassed. That's a topic for another time. It appears as though drivers do not want to share the road with pedestrians and cyclists. We have gotten to a point where drivers do not pay attention to crosswalks and do not pay attention to pedestrian traffic, even in areas of town which see a large amount of pedestrians. And our sidewalks in a good portion of the city are unusable, either due to the sidewalk crumbling or the vegetation is not maintained, causing the pedestrians to have to use the road. There are also spots in the city where the sidewalk just ends. How crazy is this? I am seeing more and more news stories about pedestrians and cyclists being struck by cars, and unfortunately, some of these people have died. One pedestrian was struck and killed just a few blocks away from here. A few months ago, a cyclist was killed by a distracted driver. Ironically, she was cycling on part of the Ironman route. I have heard some rumblings our driver's ed is changing and will incorporate more pedestrian safety training. This is great, but what about our drivers who have already gone through driver's ed? We have our once-a-year pedestrian safety campaign, which I believe today started to kick off. These items are a great start, but we need much more to help prevent injury and death from occurring. I am asking council to consider adding signage and lights to crosswalks. We make needed repairs to our sidewalks, install permanent signage, not just yard signs, in areas of the city with high pedestrian traffic, urging drivers to give a second glance for pedestrians. I also would like to invite the members of city council to join me for a run or even for a walk. This would be the perfect opportunity to see what I have described. Thank you very much for your time and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Rebecca Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor, and Congress members. What is the city going to do to take action on gun violence in our city northwest? How am I supposed to feel safe in my home? An incident happened on April the ninth. I was in bed at twelve-thirty, eating an apple. A bullet came through my bedroom wall.
What?
Hit my wall, bounced, and hit the picture that was on the other side of my bed. It landed the head of my bed. I'm afraid. It's just that simple. I can't say nothing else. I don't feel safe in my home. There it is. And I don't know if I can show it, but I'll show you the picture.
Can't see it.
We can't see it.
I'm sorry. Damn.
In your wall?
That's where the bullet came through, the wall, and ricocheted right here.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
You don't have any idea who that could have been?
No. There was some shooting going on in my neighborhood.
It was in the news, Mayor, because I know Rebecca. Rebecca worked for me for years, and I know her family, but she called my office to tell me about it, but it was in the news. It was a stray bullet in that neighborhood, and it just so happened to.
Come through my wall.
Come through her wall. Do you remember that incident? It was a couple of weeks ago. But anyways, a couple of weeks ago, and it was in the news.
Okay.
Yeah. But, you know, she asked me, you know, what to do, and I said, well, you can always come down to council and let them know, you know, what you've experienced, because it's just very unfortunate, because she's really afraid now in her own home how close that was.
I was deciding if I wanted to sleep in the bed or sleep on the floor. Something's got to be done.
Well, let me say this, that's very concerning for all of us here, because as members of council or any governing body, whether it be local, state, or federal, I feel that our first and foremost responsibility is that our citizens feel safe in their homes. And that's very concerning for us, and we're working to try to change that, and I think, as you can see across this country, guns have become a major issue. They're everywhere, and I just hope and pray we can continue to make some inroads into doing that, and you shouldn't have to live like that. You shouldn't have to live in fear or deciding you need to sleep on the floor instead of the bed because you want to dodge a bullet. That's not good. It's a shame.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something? I was just wondering, have you heard from the Roanoke City Police about what may have happened or what may have?
They said something, it could have been a gain into initiation or something going on, but as far as anything else happened, said anything else to me.
So it's being investigated, though, by the police. They're investigating you.
Could I ask?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Price.
Follow-up question. And the police talk with you as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And members of... Who else lives in your home with you?
Well, I live in an apartment complex.
Okay.
And one of my neighbors, she says she heard the gun. I called her. I says, "Do you hear that?" She says, "I know what you're calling for. The bullets and shots." I says, "Yeah." She says, "I'm thinking if I need to get on my floor." She's because standing right up under my window.
Well, I just want to say as well, just as the mayor and others have said, you know, this is unacceptable, and it is unbelievable that you or anyone has to live in fear and feel that they are not safe in their own home. But I do want to also commend you on coming forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's another piece of putting together, how do we counteract gun violence? And it takes our citizens to come forward and report when they see something, that they need to say something. So thank you to you and your family, and you have my prayers.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca, for coming down. I know it took a lot of courage to do that.
Yes, indeed. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next speaker, Mayor, is, I believe, Mr. Bell wants to speak again.
Who is that?
Jordan Bell.
What I would like to speak about kind of ties in with what the previous speaker spoke about, but that is having something for our children to do in our neighborhoods. I'd like to come down here and speak about the construction of a playground in the Gainesboro area. Ms. Bernadette BJ Lark wanted to come down here with me today, but she wasn't able to, so she wanted me to read a comment of hers, and then I'll speak about what I have to say. She says, "I am Bernadette BJ Lark. I live and work in Gainesboro, and we all will agree that every community needs parks and green spaces. Gainesboro has no parks, and we need positive resolution to this conflict. Parks and green spaces are a necessity, not an amenity. A growing body of science is demonstrating that spending time in nature or even in urban park or garden is good for us, but the grass isn't green for everyone, as you now know. Scientific research and facts prove where there are no parks and green spaces, there is, where there are parks and green spaces, there is little to no violence." She finishes by saying, "So let us get to work positive proactive ways." The city boundaries of Gainesboro are from Orange Avenue, where the Gainesboro YMCA is, and located, to the railroad on Shenandoah Avenue, North and South, and Williamson Road to Fifth Street, East and West. In these boundaries, there is no safe, walkable playground for the young people of that neighborhood. If children in Gainesboro wanted to have fun, wanted to have fun at a park, they would have to walk across a busy Orange Avenue to Washington Park, or they would have to cross Fifth Street and walk at least five to six blocks to Loudon Park to have some fun and just to gather as young people. The benefit of having a playground in a community is tremendous. It promotes community areas for children to gather. It promotes healthy living by allowing a child a place to play. It also shows a sense of community when you have playgrounds in your community that children can walk to. When we think of communities, one of the major keys to a proactive and productive community is having areas of play for children and families. When our neighborhoods were at their best, there were schools on every corner in our neighborhood where children could go to the playground at the school and where families could gather, where community organizations could gather, where churches could gather and have a good and safe time. We, as community members in Gainesboro, have already committed to seeing this project completed. We have contacted different organizations locally, statewide, and nationwide to see how communities benefit from playgrounds and how we can make this a reality. I come to city council representing a community that has no safe, accessible playground for our children in walking distance. I am here tonight to see how the city can work with the community to figure out a way to make a playground in Gainesboro a reality for our children. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is George Hunter.
My name is George Hunter. I'm a resident of Rosewalk Lane, Roanoke City, retired public school teacher. I was getting ready to go out and ride my stand-up bike on the Greenway, and I got this email that from the city of Roanoke, that Roanoke City was planning to raise a Ukrainian flag in Lee Plaza on Wednesday morning at ten o'clock. Now, I don't want to be a contrarian, but I'll just make a few brief comments. I don't view that as a symbol of empathy or love for a country that's being attacked by a very powerful superpower neighbor as much as I do as viewing it as a symbol of hatred of Russia, which we have been stoked with in this country since the Russian Revolution in 1917, about 105 years. And I was a history major in college, and I've been through the '60s. I was a child of the '60s. And if we were truly sympathetic and empathetic with big, with small nations that were trampled on, invaded by superpowers, we would have had flags of Vietnam up many years ago. We would have had flags of Iraq flying around, Afghanistan, Libya, Panama. We would have had flags of Iraq flying around, Afghanistan, Libya, Panama, Grenada. I don't want to go on and on with this list, but I could, and it's been documented. There is a superpower that's greater than the superpower of Russia that has invaded many countries that are less powerful than Ukraine. And yet, I have not seen any flags of those countries flying at Lee Plaza. I'm not telling you what to do to express your sympathy. I think it's terrible what's going on in Ukraine, the invasion. Just like I did, I protested the Iraq invasion, the Afghan invasion, the invasion of Libya, every invasion that the United States has made in my lifetime, at least since I was in college. But I'm just saying that to put this Ukrainian flag up, realize what we're putting it up, the reason is just because the Russians are the invaders. It's not because a small country is being invaded, or we would have had a lot more flags flying at Lee Plaza, okay? Thank you very much. I just don't want to be a contrarian, and I don't want to pour water on anybody's head, but I just want us to think about what we're doing and give it some careful thought. And in an age when we're trying to get rid of signs of bigotry and discrimination, and I'm all for that, you know, I know what... I went to Berea College, which is probably one of the first integrated liberal arts colleges in the South. And I was very proud of that and still am. And I'm very socially conscious, always have been, I hope I have. And I just want us to think about what we're doing. We're actually joining the crowd right now that's feeding a certain bigotry in this country, that's hatred of another foreign country. And it's not for love of the Ukrainians that we send them weapons to get more of them killed. That's not what we should be doing. That'd be like sending weapons to northwest Roanoke. They don't need more weapons. They have plenty of guns. So, I'm just saying, think about what we're doing in raising the flag, and realize at least one citizen in Roanoke does not think of it in a positive way. I may be the only person in the whole city of Roanoke, and that's okay with me. And thank you for indulging me, if you appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, Mr. Best Pitch.
Do y'all have any questions? Not a minute.
No, sir. I just want to tell you what we have done in the last few weeks to also show our support for the people of the country of Russia.
I know about the sister cities.
Right. We have a Russian flag flying down at Pearl Flue Plaza around the fountain, and we've been asked to take it down. And we have not, because it doesn't represent our support for the government of any country. It's our support for the people who live there. And as you noted, we did not suspend or revoke our sister-city relationship with the people of SKOFF.
And thank you for that.
And I don't want to say too much, because I don't want to get anybody over there in trouble, because they, you know, if they speak out against what's happening in their own country, they can be confined in prison for as much as 15 years. But our chair of the SKOFF committee in Roanoke Valley Sister Cities sent an email and told her contact in SKOFF that we had passed that resolution that said we continued to support all of our sister cities. And the response was, "You just don't know how much that means to me." So, we still have the SKOFF sculpture in Centennial Plaza. We still have the Russian flag. We support the people of every country, whether we agree with their government or not, whether we agree with what they're doing or not. We support the people. But I will just make one minor correction, if you don't mind. Ukrainian flag will go up on Wednesday in Freedom Plaza.
Did I say Lee or...
You did.
What did I say?
Lee Plaza. But we don't have a Lee Plaza anymore. We have Freedom Plaza.
Excuse me.
And it's...
For your sake, I've made it my whole life.
Well, it's especially significant to me, at least, because that's why we're putting the flag there. We want everybody to have freedom. And I agree, I don't want to get into...
But let's not get into... Let's talk about hypocrisy, but I don't want to get into that right now.
We haven't, no, we haven't been, but, you know, at Roanoke City Council, we don't get to make those decisions. But thank you for coming down. I appreciate you.
Hypocrisy is a sin, at least according to my fundamentalist mother. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have one more speaker, Shahid Omar.
You're in, Mayor, this is the council members. I promise you all I won't be here too long. Somebody leave us up here?
No, that's ours.
Okay. I'm here to speak on police brutality. Last time I was in here, y'all had police in here, giving them praise for some arrests they had made. Well, city council is not representative of the police. The city council represents all the citizens in Roanoke, not just the police. Recently, I read in a paper about Captain Runners, black lawyer, female lawyer, who represented her stepson, got him off a murder charge. The jury looked at the film, decided that he was not guilty of a murder charge. The police, who was involved with the arrest of him, et cetera, three days later, went into her house and tore her house up. Parked their big SWAT van outside the parking lot, not parking lot, but her driveway, tore her door down to get inside, even though she had told him, "You want him to come in," tore her door down to get inside, pour contents of soda cans out of the bottle on the floor, looking for a suspect in the can. That's what they were doing. Tore her house up. Police, seven police. The city council should bring the same police in here and talk to them about what they did, because the fellow judge says it was wrong. City council don't represent just the police. City council represents all the citizens. They went into a black lawyer's house and tore her lawyer's, tore her house up. What city council got to say about that? Police, that's our police, represent us. Black lady, lawyer, city of Roanoke, her house was tore up by seven police. And nobody going to say nothing to the police? Something is wrong. City council represents all the citizens, not just the police, but all the citizens. That lady is a citizen of Roanoke City. And police went in her house and tore it up. Something should be said about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers?
No, I don't have any other speakers.
Okay. All right, then, with there being no further business, this council meeting will stand in recess until...
First recess, Mayor, is, I believe, the... If council is going to go to the raising of the Ukrainian flag on Wednesday, April 20th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. in Freedom Plaza.
Is that going to be a meeting, or is that just to...
What that's does by recessing to that, that way, there's no question as to whether council members are coming, whether that's a meeting or not. It's just a safeguard.
Did you say, did you say the 22nd?
The 20th, this Wednesday.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, I have. I'm on it.
And...
I want to be here.
Thank you, Mrs. Spencer. And then we have, please recognize, we have a meeting on April 26th. That is Tuesday, April 26th. Am I accurate, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. For the purpose of conducting public hearings on the city of Roanoke recommending a fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget at 7:00 p.m. and proposed real estate tax increase at 7:10 p.m. That's Tuesday, August 26th. And then this Wednesday, August 20th, April.
April.
I mean, August. April.
Okay, Mayor, it's okay.
April, the 20th, the 20th here on Wednesday. And I also hope you're the kin, I may be out of town later that evening, the summit that we've been invited to, these members have been invited to. I know Joe, Councilman Cobb, will be there along with Chris, our gang specialist, and others in the community. It's a pretty wide group. So, just want you, if you can, put that on your calendar, if you can get by there. I'm not sure...
It's online. It's online.
On Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yes, I'll be there. I'll definitely be there. All right, so...
That particular meeting is being organized by someone other than the city. The raising of the Ukrainian flag is being organized by the city, and therefore, just as in abundance of caution, if more than two council members are present or want to be present, it just covers the base. And I believe, Mayor, you're speaking at the raising of that Ukrainian flag as well. So, that was another reason. If a council member wanted to speak, then having recessed at that point, he would be able to.
Yes, yes, sir. And I'll be speaking earlier that morning for a read back, read a breakfast for childhood reading at the library. All right, council then will stand in recess until April 20th, Wednesday, April 20th.
...but never said anything to Kay McDonald. One of them was Darlene Wolfgram. She heard it first from her own mom, who heard it at church.
She said, "Everybody kind of at church..."